Welcome. Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order this work-study session for Independent School District 624. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Thompson.
Here.
Arcand.
Here.
Beloit, absent. Chapman?
Here.
Ellison, here. Mullen?
Here.
Newmaster?
Here.
All right. We have two operational items to start with. The first one is the action on the Lincoln Elementary bids. Dr. Kasmercheck or Mr. Wald, is this you guys?
Yep. Thanks, Don. Tim's on his way up and he'll take it from here.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we on here? Is this mic on?
I don't think that one's on, Tim.
It's on. Okay. Good evening, Chair Mullen, members of the board. Dr. Kasmercheck, on October 13th, we opened the bids for the Lincoln Elementary project. If you recall, at our September board meeting, we reviewed all of our Phase 1 projects, including Lincoln. That went to bid October 13th. And I think every time we get up here, we say that we had a record turnout of bidders for our projects, and that's the case again. We had 189 bids for this project. The Lincoln project includes a new gymnasium, conference room, cooler, and extended day office addition, additional parking, and parent drop-off zone, media center renovation, renovation of stage and small gym to use as mixed-use and specialist classrooms. The total bids came in $5,958,272.75.
You... Did you have... Sorry, Mr. Wald, I can't see you.
Oh, I'm sorry. The recommendation is to approve the... or to award the construction contracts for the addition and remodel at Lincoln Elementary in the amount of $5,958,282.75.
Thank you very much. You've heard the recommended action. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Who was first? Was that Mr. Chapman?
Yes. Dr. Newmaster.
Okay.
Okay. There's a motion.
What did we decide on? Did we decide Dr. Newmaster and then Kim as the second?
Yeah.
Okay.
So who made the motion?
Dr. Newmaster.
Thank you. And I'm assuming that there's a second by Mr. Chapman?
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion regarding the motion? Hearing or seeing none. This will require a roll-call vote. Would the clerk please read the roll?
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. The motion passes. We will move to our next operational item, B2, which is the action on the expanded meal access for Minnesota children and adult grant. I'm assuming, Dr. Kasmercheck.
Yep. Mr. Wald is here to handle that one.
Thank you. Yeah, Bridget Lane, our Nutrition Services Coordinator, applied for and received the expanded meal access for Minnesota children and adults from the Minnesota Department of Education, a grant total of $104,000, to purchase a delivery truck. And this will provide us the flexibility and reliability we need during these ever-changing lunch service rules, where seemingly every three months, we're changing the rules, or the MD's changing the rules, on who we can provide lunches to. And so this has worked out well for our community. We're really proud of Bridget Lane and her team for pursuing this grant and earning it, so we'll be able to have more reliable transportation for our meals programs. So the recommendation is moved to approve acceptance of the grant for a total amount of $104,000 to fund the delivery truck.
Thank you, Mr. Wald. Is there a motion to approve the grant?
So moved. Ellison?
Thank you, Ms. Ellison. Is there a second?
Seconded by Thompson.
Thank you very much, Ms. Thompson. There's been a motion to second. Any discussion regarding the action? So can you tell me... I have a question. Is there... Can you tell me who the grant was through?
Yeah, it was through the Minnesota Department of Education.
Oh, thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Is there any other questions regarding the grant?
I have one.
Okay.
Is it refrigerated by chance?
It is not refrigerated, no.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Hearing or seeing none. This will require a roll-call vote. Would the clerk please read the roll?
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcand?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
The motion passes. Thank you very much. With that, thank you, Mr. Wald. We will move into our first discussion item, D... excuse me, C1, which is a facilities update, new elementary school and White Bear Lake area high school. Mr. Wald?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Mullen. So as you know, our staff and administration have been working diligently on planning process and design groups for our Phase 1 projects, as well as our new elementary school and high school. At the September board meeting or work-study session, excuse me, we introduced the Phase 1 projects, including all the Phase 1 elementaries, the transportation garage, and the South Campus addition, gym addition. Tonight, we are going to present progress so far on the new elementary school in Hugo, as well as the addition to the high school, the current North Campus site. And with us to guide this presentation is Sal Bagley and Paul Aplikowski from Wold Architects and Engineers. Welcome, Sal and Paul.
Good evening, Chair Mullen, members of the board, and Superintendent Kasmercheck. Thank you for having us. Thanks for the introduction, Tim. I'm Sal Bagley with Wold Architects and Engineers.
And Paul Aplikowski with Wold. Thanks for having us here tonight.
So doing a referendum projects update focused on the new elementary and the high school. As Mr. Wald already said, these are some projects you've seen updates on recently, referendum projects completed. The ALC security renovation occurred this summer, and that is complete. We have now bid out and awarded Lincoln, Matoska, Venice Heights, Willow Lane, the new transportation and South Campus Gym Additional in the past about six weeks. So we're here to talk to you today about the new elementary school and the White Bear Lake area high school project. I should also mention other projects that are currently in design include the South Campus Phase 2 addition, so that's a classroom and office addition, as well as the beginnings of some furniture, and you'll see those at upcoming updates. So we're going to start with White Bear Lake area high school. Project scope, there are additions and renovations to create a comprehensive 9-12 high school. That includes new furniture for all classrooms and learning spaces, as well as significant upgrades and expansion to the kitchen and cafeteria to have the appropriate capacity for a total capacity of 3,200 students, expandable to 3,400. That is about a 375,000 square foot addition to an existing about 285,000 square foot building. And it is a large project, easily the largest of the referendum. It's about $179 million in total project cost, including the building, as well as some on and off-site improvements, and some additional LTFM funding for some renovation projects, particularly in mechanical and indoor air quality. From a schedule perspective, we started schematic design pretty closely right after the referendum passed. And we had a core planning group of teachers, staff, stakeholders that met through January through May to really land the floor plan of the building. We did a preliminary update to you all at that time. And we've been in design development really since then, so all throughout the summer. And we'll be in that phase for a little bit while yet here. I'll cover what happens in that, the user group process we've been going through. The intent is to go out to bid and start construction in spring of 2021. We will be bidding the project in late April, is the plan at this time with Cross Anderson, for summer 2021 construction. And the project will open in phases over the next four years. And here's a sneak peek of the design there, an Axon. I'm going to review a few of the key criteria and commitments that the core planning group set that are really the goals and mission for the project. The design will be future-ready and forward-thinking and adapt to the changing needs of the community over time. The design will honor and embrace all cultures. It will be rooted in the history of the area while reflecting the present culture and White Bear Lake area schools' community sensibilities. The building will be an inclusive place where learners can explore their evolving interests and develop a sense of community. Learning studios should be organized to create a small-school feel within the high school. The building and programming will actively support student agency while providing guidance and support in their educational journey. And special education spaces should be distributed to provide inclusion and opportunities for learners. Then a couple key criteria. The building provides spaces for meaningful collaboration for staff, learners, and the community. The union serves as the central connecting space within the building, connecting the main entry, learning studios, fine arts, and athletic areas. The learning commons should be a space for innovation and technology and a resource for all learners and staff. Spaces within the learning commons should allow for collaboration between learners and their peers in both large and small groups, as well as staff and community partners. The learning common should have a direct physical and visual connection to the multi-story student union and be a central element or hub within the school. The building will have dedicated spaces for staff collaboration, rest, and support. Staff offices or home bases will be distributed among the learning spaces in proximity to the area in which they're teaching at the time, and they should be secure and private. Specialty learning spaces, like the pathway spaces, science, and facts, should be easily accessible from all learning studios. And organization of the learning studio should support collaboration around both content and learners. So those are really kind of the highlights. I think we have several pages of each, as obviously it's an expansive project. The phase we've been in is design development, and the major activity we do during that is the user group process. So I'm going to go through a couple of those. This is a series of meetings in which we meet with relevant space-type users. On this sheet, you can see here a learning studio, which is an example, classroom pod. And we meet to talk through the details. So we talk about adjacencies, where doors are, where cabinets should be, where light switches are, where marker boards should be, where we need rough-in for future... for power or televisions. And so we go into that level of detail for every type of space, which for the high school project is a lot. So we've had actually 46 user group meetings so far. We're technically in our third round. We met with everybody one time right before school got out, or one or two times right before school got out in May and June. And now we're on round three, which are really ongoing. We actually had a whole series of them today. You can see, like I said, on the right-hand side is an example of that, kind of we zoom into particular parts of the building. I'll go through a couple others. Here is a zoomed-in plan of the auditorium, stage, and scene shop. We actually have a user group about the scene shop and green room tomorrow, but you can see the main arrangement here. So on the left-hand side, there's the word "gallery." That is in the student union. We'll get to an overall plan after this. But you can start to see the major parts of the auditorium taking shape, including the house of the seating. You can see there's an orchestra pit called out there, the stage, orchestra shelf storage right off of that, ways to get up and down to the orchestra pit, the loading gallery for the rigging, and the relationship to the scene shop right off of the stage. So these are the types of details we get into with these user group meetings for every type of space, whether it's language arts, the learning commons, the kitchen, the cafeteria, et cetera. Another example of those, here's the fieldhouse. So this is a five-station fieldhouse as a part of the addition, with a 200-meter running track on the floor and a walking track around the second story of that, with some adjacent storage and other support spaces. Obviously, another complex space that needs a lot of input from your building users. We talk about where we want power rough-in, drop-down curtains, projection capabilities, sound system connections, what types of graphics should be on the wall, et cetera, striping, lots to go through. Just one final example, there's probably a 100-page book with this high school project, but the autos manufacturing and construction trades area, the relationship between the auto shop, which is on the left-hand side there, you can see from the overhead of the cars, with some adjacent storage and an engineering lab right next to it. Then next, we've got a couple of other hands-on labs, including the manufacturing. And in these spaces, we need to plan really carefully for equipment, either that you have today or in the future, to make sure you have the right power, ventilation, et cetera. So that's what we've been doing over the past couple of months. It's certainly been a big-time commitment on your stakeholders, and we're very thankful for that time. I'm going to have Paul come talk about the site plan.
All right. So you're looking at the overall site plan of the central and high school building, North Campus building. The light gray area circles there are the existing building, and then the dark gray is the new additions that are going with that. Central is shown as the white on the bottom down there, just for orientation. Generally speaking, we're trying to maximize the use of the field of the space that you have. This map does show all of the properties that the board has approved purchase of being utilized for the site. And you can see, obviously, a lot of that goes to some functional things around the building, like parking. We're going to have a greatly improved parent drop-off area. Then the north area, Luricas, is going to be green space. And then we're trying to focus the central area of the site on green space as well, and that'll be shared use between central and the North Campus. Then we just zoom in a little bit. This shows a little bit better the north side of the site, so Luricas, the plan is to get about two and a half fields up there. There are some wetland areas up there that we have to avoid, so we can't do much more than that up there. Again, focusing a lot of parking around the edges of the building, so that it's convenient for people to get in. And then another interesting feature of this part of the site is we are putting a bus loop in between the two. So I think you've seen some instances of that in your district, but it's a dedicated area for buses, for student loading and unloading. In this case, it's going to be shared between the middle school and the high school. The staggering of times in the future will help that work out. And that's just, again, an example of trying to save space on the site, so that we can turn as much over to green space and parking and other things that are needed. You can also see in the center, the track and field, as it's labeled there, that we're kind of calling that a mini stadium, so it'll have some bleachers on it, and allow you to do some of your smaller varsity sports, smaller spectator varsity sports like track and field, and maybe some soccer games there. And then this just is the south part of the site, showing central more. We are currently also proposing to reconstruct Price Field and turn it north-south and give it an all-weather track around that, too, so there'd be a great asset for the campus. We also wanted to talk a little bit about the concept that we've come up with for the building. So all of those things that Sal talked about in all that detail, we do a lot of that collaboratively with your users. And they give us tons of functional information about how the building could work, should work, and a lot of the philosophy behind how the function will work. We also like to overlay some, what we call, concept to it. And it helps us with the look and the feel of the building, and hopefully enriches people's experience within the building. So for the high school, we looked at a design inspiration of all of the waterways that are in your district. So on the screen, there is a list of all of, I believe it's all of the named lakes within the district, including the Big Four, of course, that many of you recognize the names. But there's a lot of other smaller waterways that are also named within the district. We found that quite inspirational and unique to your district. Some further investigation, we looked at, on the left, that image of a water drop, and really thought about that as an inspiration for kind of the ripple effect that being in school has, that you make an effect now, and it ripples out through the rest of your life. So we found that inspirational. And then on the right, you can see there is a map of the world, and that's actually a fun map, if you want to go on the Internet and find that. It's the shipping routes of the world, and it's actually animated, so it's kind of fun. You can play with that. But those routes are all categorized by color and cargo type, so that's what the colors are. Again, looking to that as a metaphor for high school life, and kind of the beauty of a lake, that once you step off the shore, you have kind of an infinite amount of paths before you, with the idea that high school is like that as well, that when you step onto the water, onto high school, that you have many choices, and the future is an adventure that you can choose as you go. Running with that theme of the lake and how the building can start to relate to that, we looked at different lake images, the idea of shores and lagering, some of the beautiful curves and flow that happens with that. And that image on the right, I really like, because it reminds me a little bit of North Campus now, so that's been a part of our inspiration. And then looking a little bit deeper into kind of the juncture in how do you use these things. So things like shorelines and natural shorelines or docks, and how those interface with the water. And in particular, what we're taking out of this is how do humans interact with that, and how do we help create some of those experiences in the high school? And then finally, again, we're taking these things in an abstract manner, but this shows some eddies and currents in there, which is another thing. In a building as big as this, 3,200 students, there's a lot of flow that happens. And we're trying to create opportunities within that. So things like flexible learning areas, for instance, there are things that can happen on a mainstream, but in a quiet corner, or within an area, we can create some eddies and quiet spots, basically, that students can come to collaborate in. And then finally, this image looks a little bit at the overall that we're thinking about for the building and some of the how to apply this. So in the middle is a very abstract map of the plan of the building, and we're looking at some different ways and inspirations that we can use to help manifest, again, sort of how you'll feel when you're in the space. So the union is in the middle there, that more open space, and we're saying that's like the open water, so it's more of a lively, active space where you can stretch out and have a lot of freedom. We have areas like bays, so that's pointing to the auditorium, and the game gym, and even the learning commons or the media center, that those are a medium level of activity. They have some sense of enclosure. It's a safe place to be and get out of the flow, but still lots of people there and lots of things happening. Then Cove would be the further extension of that, that it's like a bay. It's a gathering place, but it also has a lot of quietness to it and a little bit more seclusion to it, so you can hunker down and get your work done. And then finally, the islands. And we're using those as a metaphor for some of the feature spaces in the building. So our core group gave us that direction, that spaces like specialty labs should be on display and easily found and connected to the learning studios. We're calling those islands. And so they're kind of out there in the space floating, and you can access some readily. And then this is just the second level, showing that learning commons in the middle being a bay. And then this repeats on the different levels of the building.
All right. So I'm going to go through the overall floor plan here. It is color-coded, as I know the labels are probably a little bit hard to read. The three circles you can perceive in the center are the existing buildings, so those should help orient you along with the space that connects them in between. We are proposing to build on to and expand the existing cafeteria. You might recognize that arc to create the main entry. There's a black arrow over there to indicate that. The main office is in a coral or kind of a peach color, directly adjacent to that, to have a secure vestibule. And that really enters directly into what we've referenced a couple times now, the union. That is the term the core planning group came up for, for really the commons of the building, the student commons. So that would serve for gathering, certainly for eating at lunchtime, et cetera, as well as for a lobby for the auditorium, which is immediately to the right-hand side when you walk in the front door. That is shown in purple, is about 850 seats, with its adjacent support spaces also in purple and gray around that, whether they're storage or other spaces. The auditorium is located directly next to your existing auditorium, so that's the purple that's inside the circle, which is surrounded currently by music rooms and other support spaces. There are additional music rooms and support spaces that will be added via an addition. So you can see those two large music spaces, and all the gray is practice rooms and storage and offices, things of that nature. A whole series of blue practice rooms kind of along the curve there, to really create a fine and performing arts suite of the building. Then we continue going through the union. On the south side of the union, in the existing gym circle, you can see it's labeled "kitchen and servery." So the intent is to, in a very fundamental way, expand the kitchen to serve the right number of students at our 3,200-student capacity, and create a lot of frontage for a really different eating experience for students there. So lots of choice, and we've been working very closely with Bridget and her team on that. The union, like I said, would also serve for lunch at the cafeteria time. Directly, I'll keep going south and then go to the learning studios. So if we keep going south, you can see your existing game gym in the center of that circle, that south circle. That is being improved to get about... to get to a total capacity of about 200 seats, 2,000 bleacher seats, sorry. And then some other spaces around that, you can see a couple of classrooms. The blue color indicates some of our hands-on or feature labs. So you can see we've got business and nursing in that part of the building, as well as some community rooms and health, and the concession stand. That's with the little red box just before the addition starts. And there is proposed to be an athletics entry. So you can see that, again, with a larger black arrow in the bottom right... or bottom-left-hand corner there. And that really marks where we're going from being inside the existing building to being a part of the addition again. So right inside that athletics entry, you could go to the concession stand. The auxiliary gym would be directly ahead of you. And then if you took a right, you'd be on the walking track level of the fieldhouse. The fieldhouse is proposed to be sunken down one floor, so that its game courts are on the same level as your existing game court. So athletes can stay all on the lower level, and all of the locker rooms can be on the lower level. I'll get to that on another floor plan. And then on the same level in that part of the building is also the weight room. So again, we're on walking track level for the fieldhouse here. Okay, so then I'll go over to the learning studios. So if we go back up to the upper left-hand part of the plan, inside the existing 100s, 200s circle, you can see there's a couple fax classrooms, as well as a learning studio. We'll dive a little bit into that in a couple graphics here. And there's a series of science labs there in the darker green. So there's some inside the existing circle, as well as feature islands, like Paul mentioned, inside the addition. So all along that connection between the existing building and the addition are those feature labs, culinary arts, three science labs, some additional art rooms. And then towards the very upper left-hand corner, you can see the zoom-in area of the auto, construction, manufacturing, engineering, et cetera. And that does connect to the 600s wing. So there is a path to connect to that very northern part of the existing building there. And then finally, last but not least, are the main learning studios. So those are the light-green spaces on the very left-hand side of the plan. You can see they're labeled "learning studio 1" and "learning studio 2." And there's a third one down there, too, it just doesn't have a label on it. And that really represents a series of classrooms to create that small-school feel. I will go through a detailed zoom-in of one of those in a few slides here. So this is the main level. We're going to go downstairs to that game court level that I mentioned. So your existing game gym is in the center here, and it's surrounded by fitness spaces, locker room spaces, team rooms, training, et cetera. So that's all being accomplished via renovation or improvement of the current building. And then once you step outside the circle, we're again in addition. So underneath the auxiliary gym will be the new wrestling room. You can see the mats in there. And then finally, the floor level of the fieldhouse with some support spaces and a significant amount of storage. So we'll go to the second floor now, again, to orient you. The existing circular space that has color inside of it is the 100s, 200s circle. So in the center of that, it was really important to the core planning group that the learning commons or media center be really a driver of, or kind of the center of gravity of the learning experience. So it will be renovated and expanded to create a lot of connection. We have a couple other zoom-ins of that in a couple slides. So that all of that in the light blue is the learning commons. And then it's surrounded by a couple learning studios in the existing building. Across the way, some of those islands include the... some labs and digital studios. We have a couple more science labs on this floor in the very dark green, and then learning studios 5, 6, and 7. And then finally, that part on the west side is a three-story addition to maximize green space. So we have learning studios 11, 12, and 13, as well as the remainder of our science spaces and some other support offices. So it's a big project, certainly lots to get into, lots of labels that were probably difficult to read. I thought I'd dive into just a couple of the key concepts quick here. So this is what we call an Axon diagram. It's like we took the roof off or took the ceiling off, and we're looking down into it. And this really represents the... kind of the... one of the driving features that the core planning group wanted to see is that small-school experience. So we have labeled the classrooms 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, if you can see those numbers there. So this really represents about six classrooms worth of space. But the core planning group felt it was really important to, in the air and mind of flexibility of thinking about the future, to have a variety of learning environments available in these learning studios. And so instead of six of the exact same type of classroom, they're really all somewhat customized, with the idea that the teachers will office out of the office that's in the, really, the very top of the graphic, that's got an orange floor to it. So that's the staff office there. And then the staff that own this learning studio will collaborate together on what space best meets their needs for that day. Another feature here is in the orange on the bottom left is a presence of special education or other support services in every learning studio. So that's really prevalent throughout the whole design. Couple other features here, you can see there's a couple conference rooms. Those are kind of the islands in the center of these learning studios, a significant amount of small group and individual space. And then I'll kind of hit the highlights of some of these. So there's classroom number one. There's visual connectivity between classroom number one and the flexible learning area outside of it. Classrooms 2 and 3 both also have that visibility to the flexible learning area, as well as the ability to combine and become a double classroom. So there's an operable wall between them to support team teaching or other types of group sizes. Classrooms number 4 and 5 are not entirely bounded by four walls, so they are a really fundamentally different type of experience. The core planning group got to experience some of that on tours and saw a lot of possibility in that, as well as some operability between the two of them. You can see an operable wall right here. Then we come to the staff office, so there's space for all staff to have a landing pad, some storage, a phone room. some storage, a phone room, and space to do private meetings, as well as some space to meet with students. So right outside the office, came up with the idea of a, the porch. So it's really kind of a, a neutral ground for students are welcome to come, meet with their teacher and get advice or get questions answered, et cetera. And then last but not least, we have classroom number six here, and that is a, a three-walled classroom. And this is a representative learning studio, sometimes the arrangement is slightly different in each of the 12, but they all have these same kit of parts and philosophy behind them.
Can I talk to you a little?
Yeah.
I just wanted to share some of the development of this. We have had input from students and teachers on the core group, as well as a lot of staff input and administrative input during the user group process. And there's a lot of fun things happening here and provide a lot of opportunity to do education differently. I can't, I would have to let you know that there's probably some concern about it too. It's going to take some work to get the culture to support this kind of a, a classroom, so that's some work to be done over the next few years. But there's some really encouraging things that have come out of it, and one story I wanted to tell, in the staff area, so each one of these learning studios has a staff area, that's partly to support the idea that they don't have their own classroom to call home, so they have a, a home base. And we were planning a break room, a smallish break room in each one of them, and in the user group process, the staff actually suggested that we make this thing called a porch, we're calling it a porch, so that when they occupy their studio, and the whole studio really is their, their classroom or their home base, that they can have more interaction with students in those. And they said, well, we really like a sink, and if the sink's out there, the students could use it. So I think there's some really wonderful conversations we've had, and I think it's going to be a great step in building a different kind of a culture, more, with more student agency in, in the future, so.
Some other things you can see are here, the, is this is the entrance to one of those learning studios, so the addition, those islands are right, right off the plan here, and then access to some restrooms right here, as well as building support spaces like mechanical and electrical rooms. So now we have another one of those Axon diagrams, so again, it's like we took the roof off of your existing building to study the learning commons is more, in more detail. So the learning commons right now takes up about, I don't know, maybe about 40% of this space, so it is both being renovated and expanded to serve the capacity, including its barriers and boundaries being eroded to make it much more accessible, and especially to serve the existing learning studios, so all of the classrooms in the existing building can take advantage of the flexible space that this will provide. So the, it is in the very, very center part of the building, and it does reach out towards the addition on the west side here. And to the south of it is the Union. Go one more. So while it's intended to be very flexible, we have talked about some very specific zones, the very central part of it being dedicated for flex and meeting with an adjacent maker space, space for the book collection on the very northeast corner here, some space that's dedicated or thought to be used for large groups, as well as for tutoring or resource. So these are things we've talked about in very, in great detail in the user group process, as well as the core planning group. Okay, so should we maybe pause for questions?
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
We've gone through a lot, we do have a lot of exciting images to show you, but I'd love to welcome any questions on the site plan, floor plan, process.
Dr. Newmaster.
Well, I'm excited. I was excited to go through the diagrams before we came tonight, and for someone that spent 30-plus years in North Campus, there's some very welcome things that are really exciting and flexible. And my only question is, we're going from a big, three-level school to a bigger, four-level school, how many elevators have you put in? Because that was always a real spot for people that were mobility impaired.
I believe there are three elevators planned, and so it, it's kind of a complicated building, so it's never more than three stories in one spot, but it's four stories total.
Right.
So it'll be three stories over here and then three stories over here, but, so there are three planned at this time. So there's one in the academic area, one in the kind of athletics and activities area, and then one in the performing arts.
Because we will have kids that will need to take an elevator up to that final academic level that's new, correct?
Correct, yep. The third story of the addition does not exist now.
Okay.
Yeah?
All right, well, it's exciting.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments, concerns? I'm sorry, I didn't catch, who was that, Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Please.
In the picture you showed us of the, like, classroom, what did you call it again? I'm sorry.
The learning studio.
The learning studio. So is that, so each day the students could come and be in a different room, depending on what the teachers decide for that day?
Yeah, it certainly depends on how your teachers choose to use it, so it could be either by the day, or perhaps by the week, or by the unit, really intended to be flexible. I don't know if there's been any other conversation you're aware of, but...
Yeah, that's something that the core group saw in other buildings that we toured, and it's not a, not very common yet, but we believe that more and more schools will be based on this concept. So one of the criteria the core group gave us is to try to make a big school feel small. So this gives you a subdivision, and I'm really thinking of each one of these as kind of a home, and there's a family of teachers in there. So you'll come to that space and then be oriented however the teachers choose to use it. One thing we've seen in another district is that they actually put screens up, and so when students come in, there's a screen there that tells you which room you're meeting with your teacher in.
Okay. And then is that part in the front that kind of looks, it's white and it's got dividers, is that, you said something about restrooms, and I'm trying to figure out where those were?
Sure, yeah, so the main hallway, it's, sorry, it's kind of cut off in this graphic, but main hallway would be right here, on the extension of the Union. Right here are privacy restrooms, so those are a series of restrooms, and then depending on where you are in the floor plan, sometimes one of those is a custodial closet or an electrical closet, really those building support, to have that as close to the learning studio as possible.
Okay, and then each studio would have that?
They have direct proximity. I don't think each one has the exact same number, kind of depending on where they are.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Good questions.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Ellison.
I just have a couple of comments. First, like Dr. Newmaster, I'm so excited. This is really exciting work, and it's really forward-thinking. And the other comment I have is that I spent some time in some schools in Germany last summer, and a lot of German schools use this type of flexible space with teachers all officing together, and they really made incredible use of the space and really liked to have that, that option. And walking through those schools, we saw a lot of student interaction in ways that I don't often see in American schools. So this, this is really, I think, this is, this is something to really look forward to. So thank you for all this work.
Thank you. It's been a lot of fun to work on. You have a fabulous set of stakeholders who have really driven the design to this point, so lots of credit gone into all that volunteer time they've put in.
I have one more.
Dr. Newmaster.
From the diagrams, I can imagine, but I'm trying to think of how much light comes in from that commons to the interior spaces. Having been a landlocked media center that lost its skylights, is there light in the learning commons this time?
Sure, do, and I can try to adjust, I'm not sure if I have the right graphic for it, but we're intending the addition to have a significant amount of daylight to come in right here to try to help penetrate that. Obviously, at the very center of the learning commons, that does get a little bit more challenging. Another thing you'll see here is a significant amount more glass invested in the existing classrooms, to try to help, even if, you know, daylight doesn't shine directly on you, if you are in the learning commons and can see through another room to see into the sky, that that can help significantly as well. But I know that was a priority of the media specialists, as we've been meeting with them as well.
And we're also looking into the possibility of opening up those skylights again in the learning commons, so.
Awesome.
We'll keep you posted on that.
I think interior classrooms, which I also taught in, need a skylight, or one of those tunnels, light.
I think Marge just made a motion to open the skylights.
Yes, yes. Just a little one, something. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Newmaster. Other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, please continue.
All righty, I'll let Paul take back over.
Sure, so we'll get into some of the fun stuff. So we do all of this work, all of our plans are developed in a computer that lets us, we essentially build the building in three dimensions in the computer, and so it lets us do these wonderful renderings that you're, you'll see tonight. They are still a work in progress, so you can expect that they'll be slightly different by the time it actually gets built, but they're, they're well along the way and we're pretty excited about them. This is a view of the main entry of the high school, so it'd be over on the east side, actually very close to where it is now. We're actually kind of looking at the end of what is the cafeteria now, and then off to the right is the expansion of the new auditorium in the background. Again, you're going to start to see some of that concept coming through, so we're looking at some things that are evocative of water and lakes, and in this case, maybe some sailboat masts or some things like that, so we're putting that into the theme of the building. This then is the other side of the building, the west side, so we're going to create another main entry on the west side, that's the student entry, that goes right into the Union, and a similar theme there for the, the Union part of it, big open and a lot of expression of the structural elements in there. On the left side, you get a little bit of a peak of the academic or the three-story building, and our theme there is really thinking about the approach to a lake, and kind of the nature of that and how you can see through things, and there's different elements, and it creates kind of a rich tapestry for that side of the building, which helps break up that big mass into smaller, more scaled pieces. Now we've stepped around the corner, so this is one of those learning studio towers, three-story towers. Again, to fit into the neighborhood, we're trying to take that mass and break it up into different pieces, and you can see some elements in here that we're trying to just invoke without being too explicit, but there, there's some vertical pieces that could be, again, may be sailmasts, or they could be tree trunks, and then some expression on the exterior that could be looking like trees, and our thinking is that the glass, and you're looking through the glass to the, to the lake beyond. And again, remember, the inside of the building is what we're considering, the lake in the metaphor. So we think that it's going to make a really handsome building when it's done, and that metaphor doesn't have to be out in the forefront all the time, but it's kind of fun to have a little bit deeper meaning to that as we construct the building. Now we're stepping inside the building. This is the new main office. We're working very closely with the administration and with Marissa about the expression of that and the branding of all of the offices that we're doing in the district. So you can see that, bringing in a lot of school colors. Now some different spots in the building, and those little plans on the left show you where in the building we are. So we are currently standing in what would be part of the 200 hallway of north. You can see that we've removed an extensive amount of the walls and the lockers that in there, so that you can see into that learning commons. So off to the left is the core of the learning commons, deep in there, and then you can see to the right where it's open, that goes back out to the, the island area, or the, the new sort of main accessible walkway into the additions. This is a preliminary shot of the entry into the learning studio, so that's the Cove idea, so we have a little bit more of enclosure around there. That is also related to the plan for security for these, that, that is a lockdown zone within the building. And then you get a glimpse into that learning studio, and part of our idea here is that there's some screen, and there'll be some display cases here, that teachers can kind of take ownership of that area, again, if that's their home, that they can use this as a, sort of a signpost for the things that they do inside. Now we're inside one of the little learning studios, about in the, the middle of it or so, looking across some flex areas. On the left there, in the background, you see that three-sided classroom or three-walled classroom, and then on the right in the middle there, that's that porch area of the staff office. So again, the idea is really trying to create some collaborative spaces where students and teachers will interact, and lots of small group space, lots of flexibility built within those. And then we've stepped a little bit farther in now, and we're out by the window wall, and those are those open, flexible classrooms that we talked about. They are made to work, like, really breakout personalized learning spaces for classes. They also can be used in a, a setting where it's about enough space for 60 people, at least in normal times, about 60 people, and intended with the furniture to be really flexible, so you could push things into different groupings or rearrange those as need be. And then this is a shot of the Union. So this is currently, this is standing what would be outside right now, and we're looking generally west, although somehow it seems like it's kind of north-ish in the building, but it's looking up towards the, the stairs that go up into this three-story building. Some of the fun things you can see here, towards the middle there, you can see there's a grand staircase that takes you up to the second level and into the learning areas. And then to the left of that, it's a little hard to see here, but we're putting in what we call a learning stair, so those are big steps that you sit on. That'll be a one-story thing, so it provides sort of an impromptu, not only hangout spot, they're very popular in high schools that have them to hang out, but it's also a kind of an informal amphitheater, kind of a space to do some fun things within the Union. To the left of that, you can see that space there that's kind of got wood paneling on it, that is the student coffee shop, so they're getting a great prominent space right on the Union. And then some lighting, lots of daylight you can see in the upper right there, we're planning to bring in a lot of daylight up high in the Union. And then to the right, what you're seeing is actually the existing two-story, it's now outside part of the building. We are planning to keep all the windows from that space, and they will open into the Union, so they'll get borrowed daylight from the Union through that. Then another big feature here is we're doing some fun stuff with the struts, so those are the columns and beams that have to hold up the roof anyway. We're slanting them and putting some struts in them and expressing that, so that it, again, delivers really lively space again. And then we go onto the new elementary. Any comments or questions on the high school?
Dr. Newmaster.
Again, I'm just thinking, all of these wonderful things, and my mind goes back to where we were, and I'm just making sure, because everything seems to be thought out so well, have we made our accessibility from the exterior, which is beautiful, easier than it has been for people who, again, are mobility impaired? Because they used to have to park, I mean, navigate over an awful lot of barrier areas. So I hope we've got some really clear entries for people in wheelchairs or on crutches or whatever.
Yeah, I was just going to scroll back to the site plan here, so there will be, we are required to place accessible parking as close to the main entrance as possible, so there will be certainly some present of it at the main entry, but in any parking lot, we will have to have accessible, accessible parking. So it's probably a matter of which doors are open for the event that they're coming to. Obviously, for a large event, you might open the main entry, the student entry, and the activities entry. So we, Paul kind of talked about, when we talked about the site, we've really hugged parking as close to the building as possible, both for that, but also because it had the effect of, I'm going to go back one more, leaving the center part of the site to be as green as possible. So it kind of did two birds, one stone with how we arranged the parking, to have central benefit from that. So, although I will say that if you're parked in this spot back here, it's still a little bit of a jaunt across, but...
And all of the site will have accessible trails too, to the features, to the fields and things that are usable, so we're really required by, by code, by the law, to have accessibility for everything. So it'll be greatly improved with door openers on the doors that need them, elevators that access everything, so it should be nice.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Thank you very much. Please proceed.
All right. Okay, now let's take a deep breath, and we'll do the new elementary school. So the elementary school will be in Hugo, we'll get into the site plan in a few seconds here, but just to remind all, it's a new elementary to have a comprehensive K-5 school in Hugo, Minnesota, including new furniture. It's a little bit over 100,000 square foot building, approximately 43 million total project cost, including building and on and off-site improvements. It is planned for a capacity of 720 students. Given the size of the project, it's on a little bit faster timetable than the high school, so you'll notice that in our design today. We met with that core planning group from January through May, and did user groups from May through September, so we've now completed those. We are in the heat of construction documents, we will be issuing drawings to Cross Anderson for bidding towards the end of November, with a bid opening in December, so you can expect to see a bid award recommendation in late December, early January. And that is all to make sure that you can get construction started in next spring, so spring of 2021. And it'll take a little bit more than a year to build, so opening fall of 2022, it's about 16 months or so. Again, I'll review the project commitments and important design criteria from the core planning group's works that really set the stage for the rest of all the design decisions. The building and site will be welcoming, safe, and accessible for all users. The facility should support collaboration, innovation, and accommodate the needs of active learning, interaction, and social development. The design should prioritize natural daylight and connections to nature to enhance the learning environment. The building should be energy efficient. The look and feel of the building should represent the values and identity and be a source of pride for White Bear Lake area schools and the community. Spaces should be innovative, engaging, and expiring, while providing flexibility for multiple uses. Students should feel well-represented within the building. The building should be accessible for users and the community. The design should support and be adaptable for current and future technologies. The design should celebrate and make learning visible for all to see. And the... And the building should embrace the multi-generational community. And some key design criteria. The building will create professional workspaces for staff work, collaboration, and storage. Space for student projects should be provided. The learning commons should be flexible, engaging, supportive, and relevant to the work students do. Learning spaces for specialists in the learning commons should be centrally located within the building. Privacy toilet rooms should be incorporated into the facility. There should be a space large enough to hold all students while being flexible for other uses. Spaces for sensory and calming rooms should be distributed within the learning studios. Flexible spaces that cater to a variety of group sizes and uses should be incorporated. Student services should be located in and be easily accessible to each learning studio. Learning studios should have easy access to the exterior of the building for outdoor learning opportunities. And the site design should provide adequate space for parent pickup and stacking area. The playground and outdoor learning spaces should be separated from Highway 61 and be accessible from both the cafeteria and the learning communities. Mudrooms, we'll go over that in just a little bit. And the health office should be located within the main office as well as centralized and convenient to the gym and cafeteria. So I'll quickly go over the site plan. You can see Highway 61 or Forest Boulevard on the right-hand side there. The map is quite a bit more zoomed out. And then we zoom in on the left-hand side to the buildable part of that land. So you can see 157th Way at the very, very top of that image to orient you. We're between 159th and 150th here, if that helps. So there's an existing wetland and flood plain part of the site that's got a trail all along its edge there. So the building is shown in the dark gray, says building footprint. And I'll walk you through the intended operations. So on the south side is the bus loop. So that's intended to be the place that the buses park in the morning and afternoon and drop students off and pick them up to be as separate as possible from cars. On the northeast part of our site, you can see it's labeled 125 stalls. That is the staff and visitor parking lot. And it's encircled entirely by a parent drop-off loop. So a winding road there to have as much stacking space as possible. The arrow that's in the, kind of the intersection of the building footprint is the main entrance. It faces northeast. And then if you keep going around to the northwest, the loading dock is off of that as well. So again, the criteria from the core planning group wanted to separate parents and buses and create a significant amount of onsite stacking space as well as great access between the building. And what a beautiful sight you have in terms of outdoor learning opportunities. So you can see the building is surrounded by a lot of green space. And we'll, you'll see some of that in the renderings as well.
So again, we look to a concept that can help ground the building and its environment. And right away, we were drawn to some of the beautiful natural things that occur in the city of Hugo in that area and how the building can interface with that and make you feel engaged with the environment around you. And we were also really drawn to this from the city of Hugo. The best qualities of urban and rural living come together in the city of Hugo. And we've really taken that as a design inspiration, that there's this juncture of the city and the agriculture and nature and home all coming together. And we identified four of those things, civic, natural, home, and rural as part of our theme for the building. And this shot shows just kind of that relationship, that the new elementary school site is here. That's 61 there. And then obviously, the whole landscape of those things happened within close proximity of the building. And then we've taken the building and broken it up into some pieces. So one of the things that can be really nice in a building is that there's a slightly different feeling or design to each part of the building so that you kind of identify with different parts of the building. And it helps orient you. What we're doing is identifying the front of the building as the civic. The core of the building is the natural. And then the learning studios. So there's a variation on the learning studios here as well, and we call those the home. And then the site around it is what we're thinking of as the rural, all that green space that surrounds the building.
So I'll walk you through the floor plan. North is up on this floor plan. You can see the very edge of the parent drop-off loop right near where it says main entrance. So you come in the main entry and the main office is directly adjacent to that to have that secure vestibule relationship with reception being the first space you would enter. Then you come really into the center of the building to the north or to up on the page or some of the more, as Paul mentioned, the civic spaces or spaces that might be used more extensively by the community or other groups before school, after school, on weekends. So we've got our gymnasium there as well as our two music rooms and the cafeteria with the kitchen directly attached to it. All of the critical building support spaces are shown in gray to the west and to the north of the kitchen there, including the main mechanical room, storage rooms, electrical room, loading dock, et cetera. Cafeteria and the learning commons both are part of that natural part of the building. You'll see that in some of our renderings there. And then the golden spaces that are right between the cafeteria and the learning commons are spaces for extended day. So for their storage and office to be centrally located near all the spaces they use, which are primarily the learning commons, cafeteria, and gymnasium. That location also represents one of your lockdown options. You can see there's a set of doors that go across the hallway right above learning commons so that you could allow access to only the cafeteria and gym at night if you wanted to. If we keep moving south, there's the learning commons there. It follows many similar philosophies to the high school, although executed slightly differently. We will zoom into that in another view. It was important to the core planning group that that was very centrally located and that it was incredibly accessible. So you'll find that while you can secure this part of the building off with that lockdown line I mentioned, once you're beyond it, the learning commons is very interstitched to the rest of the building and not bounded by walls. And then it is encircled on all three sides by learning studios. So you can see they're labeled learning studio number one on the east or right side, number two on the bottom or south, and number three on the left or west. We will zoom into those. I wanted to make one comment on this side. You can see at each of those learning studios, it's labeled bus entrance. So with the bus drop-off loop to be on the south side of the building, the intent is to have students actually enter the building, enter and exit, those who ride the bus, through these bus entrances which lead directly into a mudroom. So that's a place where students can leave their coats, their boots, their things before entering the learning environment. Can really lead to a diminished amount of clutter and a really nice experience. So those are shown in gray there. Couple other features on this floor are the center-based special education classrooms are located kind of at the juncture between learning studio one and two. So still very near all of the other learning experiences while also having good proximity to the main office. Then I will go upstairs. So it is a two-story building. Learning studios four, five, and six directly stacked on top of one, two, and three. Two language classrooms are right on top of the center-based classrooms. And then last but not least, a multipurpose lab is on the second floor overlooking the two-story learning commons. So that is a tall space, lots of daylight coming into it. And then, of course, you can see the gym on the very top of the page is also a tall volume. This is another one of those axon diagrams like I went through at the high school. So the learning studio concept was very intriguing to the elementary core planning group as well. So same concepts but executed slightly differently. You can see the five classrooms in each learning studio are labeled with the numbers and they each have a bit of their own specialty to have that variety of experiences. Classrooms number one and two can be combined into a large double classroom with an operable wall between them. And classroom number two is not bounded entirely on its fourth wall here. Classroom number three is intended to be designed in particular to support more maker space or messy activities. So it's got a hard surface floor and access to more sinks while still having a visual connection to the flexible space. Classroom number four is intended to be more focused on small group technology. So you can see there's a series of monitors with collection of furniture around the walls. So kind of a heavier investment in technology and being able to present and share in that space. In the gray here is the staff office, so very similar concept to the high school, but on a slightly smaller scale here being it's only five. That allows a landing spot for each teacher, so a desk, place to store their things, including lockers for paros who might work in this learning studio. It serves as a bit of a break room as well. There's a small kitchenette in the corner here that's a little hard to see. And then last but not least, classroom number five has visual connectivity to the flexible space, but it is bounded on all four walls. And then in orange here, you can see student support services. So that would be where things like EL, intervention, resource, et cetera, can happen. So there's a medium-sized group room here with an attached calming room. There's an open, small group space here and then a small group room here or a conference room you might want to think of it as. And then there's a calming room right here that's actually accessible to anyone within the learning studio. So there's two in each. And then last but not least, there's a couple of conference rooms. So there's an enclosed conference or small group room right here as well as right here. The entrance to the rest of the building and lockdown line is these sets of doors right here. This in the gray hatch is the mudroom, so that's the cubbies as we come off the, come on or off the bus. And then that is directly attached to the restroom. So the privacy restrooms are located right here. And that is the case in all of the learning studios, whether they're mirrored or rotated as you saw on the floor plan. And then here's another one of those axon diagrams of the learning commons. So we're at the very, very center of the building here. And this is really incredibly flexible, so it's got a suggested layout here. But it's intended to be able to be rearranged and take on new life. So we've got our media desk at the center here for supervision with an attached workroom right directly off of it. A couple of enclosed small group rooms or conference rooms right off of that. The book collection is currently shown in this part of the floor plan, although that's intended to be flexible. And then there's some sense of definition with a few walls to create small group zones here and here. While this part of the plan is currently shown with flexible seating to be really more small group or reading or maybe a class coming out. And one exciting feature is the incorporation of a stage or performance platform. And you'll see in some of the renderings, but given that this is a two-story space, the second story overlooks it and functions as kind of a de facto balcony. All right.
Again, this is just a reminder of some of the concept and the materials that we're thinking about drawing in from the vernacular. Here's a shot of the new office entry. And again, we're working very closely to make sure that the White Bear Lake area schools' brand is represented in all of these so that whenever you walk into one of these buildings, you remember which district you're in or you can recall which district you're in. This is then, we've just stepped in the main entry. We're kind of in the main north-south hallway now. This is the civic part of the building. So it's a little bit more rectilinear, a little bit more formal materials. And we think that's going to be a great and exciting spot in the building. This is stepping into the gym. So again, in all of the gym projects that we're doing, we're doing district branding and the Bears will be present in each of the gyms for when it's used as a community space and also FIAED. This is the new cafeteria. So this is in the natural part of the building. So you can see that we've incorporated some more natural kinds of lines and themes in there. There's some wood paneling over the servery as well as these sopets. And then, of course, abundant natural light. And that looks out towards the wetland of the site, so a nice vista out over that. And then right next to that is the learning commons. So you can see, again, carrying that nature theme in. In the foreground on the left there, you see some of that small group work. So there's some display cases and bookshelves that help create some subdivision within that space, even though it's quite open and flexible beyond that. Then you get a glimpse on the right there of the performance platform, that stage. And the circulation desk is right in the center. And once again, we're trying to get a large amount of light into that space to really make it feel like a light well in the center of the school. Now we've stepped up onto the stairs. We're in the second level, looking back down at that learning commons. And we progress into one of the learning studios. So this is the entry to that. And again, that will be a lockdown point for security within the building. And then stepping into the learning studio, we're at the center of that flex area in the middle. On the right, you're seeing classrooms one and two. So those are the ones that can be doubled up by opening the wall between them. Kind of the orange on the right, it's a glimpse into that one that's more skewed towards maker space or doing hands-on projects. The staff area is kind of to the left center. And then we're, the, it's shown as yellow on here, it's a little bit yellow. That's the special ed or the intervention spaces within each studio. And the mudroom is off to our left here. Now we've gone a little bit farther into the studio and we're looking back towards the entry. We get a look at the two breakout conference rooms. So these are conference rooms to support small group work. One of the great ideas that we got from the users on this part of the building, that space to the left with the orange chairs and it is that maker space. And they said, well, we have all these other classrooms that share and can use that flex space. Why don't we extend that too so that we could maybe have other classes or other small groups using that? So we added the counter and cabinets and the sink to this area as well. So it's kind of like you got a maker space and then kind of a flex maker space right outside of it, which was, I thought, a great idea. Now we'll step to the outside of the building. This is the view from the main parking lot. So we're somewhere in the middle of the parking lot. The main entry here is the center, this canopy. To the right is the gym box, again, expressing more of that idea of the civic. On the left is one of the learning studios. And we're breaking that down again into smaller masses as we talked about at the high school to help make it feel a little bit more homey and accessible to people. This is around the back then, so this is the backside of one of the learning studios. That canopy in the middle there, what you're seeing, and there's one on the left going into the other learning studio, those are the bus entries or the entries just connected to the mudrooms. So those are accessible. And then we just turned left a little bit and we're looking at another one of those learning studios. And then on the backside of the building, this is the end of the cafeteria is the larger piece of glass. And then the, in the corner there with the two levels, that's the learning commons in the middle. And then a learning studio off on the right. That was it. Questions?
Ms. Elson.
I have a comment and a question. The comment is, the mudroom is genius. As a parent of elementary kids, the stuff just multiplies in the winter. And so to have it all contained, that's wonderful. And my question actually came up about the high school based on something that you've done in the elementary school. Are there calming rooms in the high school?
There are, yes. There are calming rooms in the high school. I don't think there are two in every learning studio though. I actually might have to look at Lisa. I wasn't at the last high school learning studio.
There's a similar concept. So each one of the learning studios has an area that's designated as student support or student services or intervention. And within that, there's two smaller spaces that could be used as calming spaces if you so choose. And Lisa, if you want to elaborate, please go ahead.
Yeah. Great. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Thompson?
Again, I'm going to go back to the bathrooms. In elementary school, it's, you know, a very busy place. Is, I see that they're private. Does that mean that they're more like individual closed room with the toilet in it? Or is it like the bathrooms currently are? I mean, when they release students to go to lunch or whatever it is, they all go to the bathroom. So I'm a little concerned, is there enough bathrooms for them to still be able to get all the kids through there in a timely fashion?
Yeah, that's always a challenge when you need to take a whole class at once. So there's a couple of different ways that could solve. One of them is each learning studio has its own set of bathrooms. And again, the idea is that the learning studio as a whole is really the edge of their classroom. So it should make it easier for students to use the bathroom when they need to instead of having to focus on always being between class or at transition. So that will help a little bit. And then there are some on this plan, they, oops, easy, they show up up by the kitchen there. I guess I won't point to it. There's another set of larger kind of public bathrooms, if you will, there. So when they're going to lunch or going to gym or other things like that, there's also a big set there. And then there's some other common ones. So we think we have it covered.
Okay. And then another question, I love the idea of the learning commons. Of course, it's going to be something that everyone has to get used to. One of my questions would be, you know, currently, let's say, fifth grade, they all release their students to go to music or gym at different times. And that can be a little bit of a commotion because they're elementary-age students. So if they're sharing those more open spaces, is that something that was discussed and everybody felt that this open space would work well?
Yes. So that's a topic of great debate. There's been lots of discussions about it. Open schools have been around for many years, decades actually. And some of them didn't go so well back in the day. We think that a lot has been learned since then. And we think that the world is in a different place. Students are in a different place. Technology is a big part of that. So I think in support of personalized learning and student agency, the idea of more openness is helpful. So that's kind of the starting point for that. There are some compromises that come with that, obviously, like disruption. So what we've found in schools that are successful is that there's a culture built around that. So there are certainly times when the whole school... run screaming through the learning commons when you're going to gym. So there's a little bit of back and forth, and I think with both this and the high school, there is some work to be done with professional development and building the culture of the building to help support that. On the other hand, or I guess in support of that, what we're also seeing is that the idea, and I believe your district has embraced it wholeheartedly, that the media center doesn't need to be a quiet study space anymore, that it really is an activity zone, and that doesn't mean that it's raucous, but it also doesn't necessarily need to be completely silent to do its job, or to do its purpose. So we've talked through it a lot, and I would say there's some work to do as people move in and figure out that part of it, but it's been discussed.
And then, I don't know, this probably isn't a question for you guys, although you've been working with the teams, how many educators or staff do we have on these committees that are not administration? I'd imagine there's a lot, but is there a percentage?
I think the core planning group had a total of 26, and if I, I think I'm probably counting Allison, Tim, Dan, and Wayne and that, so I would say maybe 22 staff and teachers on the core planning group. And then the user groups are really entirely staff and teachers, so they usually range somewhere between, well, I say three to five, but depending on the group, sometimes it's a little bit bigger, smaller. And we met with every space type user for, again, for the elementary school, so I would say, I don't know, maybe a-
Dozens and dozens.
I was going to guess ballpark at like 40, perhaps, for the elementary school. We met with them three times.
All right. And they were all, I mean, again, this will be something everyone has to get used to, but any elementary class I've been into for my children, as they've gone through school, the teacher's space in the classroom is a very busy space, because they have a lot of stuff, and so their desks, like, they will have that space in this common area that they're all sharing, and it'll be something that they can make their own, I guess?
Yeah, that's very much the idea. And this is not a complete experiment. There are some other schools that are built on this concept that have been successful. Again, there's some work to be done to build the culture that's going to support it, and that's part of why you've put a principal on assignment, to help prepare for that day when it comes. One of the things to kind of wrap your head around this is the idea that we're not taking anything away from anybody. Instead of each teacher getting an 800-square-foot box, five or six teachers get a 12,000-square-foot box. So they still have a home, they still have a place to put their stuff, it's just a little bit less territory and a little bit more teaming as part of it. So hopefully, that's a shift that people are going to be comfortable making.
We kind of have that at ONICA a little bit. I mean, they have their own classroom, but I think they kind of started that process by creating each area with a common area for the whole grade group to utilize. So I like, I really liked that concept, and I like this, this is, I'm super excited for all of this, but it is definitely something-
It's a paradigm shift, for sure.
People are going to have to get used to, and I do see this as something that we are moving more towards. I have a cousin in Florida, and his children attend a school very similar to this concept, and they love it, so it is exciting, it's just making sure, you know, asking a couple questions, but I do like it, and it's very exciting.
Thank you.
Dr. Arcan?
Yeah, I just want to say this is really exciting, and I want to remind us that in the '70s, we had similar areas that we shared classrooms. I remember walking through a high school where you could look at one end, and look down to the other end, and there weren't walls, there were partitions that could be moved. And on days, you could show videos, and we'd all come together in areas and see the video. So this isn't new, this is exciting, because I enjoyed that in my education, and so this is really exciting to know that we can start using and sharing our human capital together, because the biggest thing I'm hearing is, we need our students to be able to work together, we need them to be able to learn together and grow together in the workplace, and so this is what they need, and this is really going to help them be ready to enter the working world and be successful.
Thank you. Other questions, comments?
I just have a couple-
Dr. Newman?
Again, exciting, all sorts of adjustments and culture things to change. One question, again, on my mobility disability question, with all the labs spread around the school so handily, do we have a good representation for handicap-accessible bathrooms in each area?
Yep. So we will be required to have handicap-accessible restrooms in every single set of restrooms, in any, if there's ever a single-stall restroom in a building, like a staff restroom, that will have to be handicap-accessible as well.
Okay.
And sinks in classrooms and all those things, everything will have to be handicap-accessible.
Okay. So that, that's just one question I had about that. And then I do think that the shared areas are great, and the teachers will create the culture to share it, and I do think the flexibility of it will be a good thing, remembering always the problems when you're sharing a space that we had before, as traveling, let's say, a German teacher who shared with history and something. You do want to have the richness of what you're teaching represented in your area. So it'll be a balance and a culture to create.
Absolutely. I've heard other school districts reference content-specific classrooms instead of person-specific, so it's not Mr. Walker's room, it's, you know, we're in the world language area of the building, so that can allow for some balance there, but I think there's certainly a lot of work yet to be done on that.
Thank you, Dr. Newman. Other questions, comments, concerns? Okay. Dr. Kazmercek, do you have anything to-
No, nope. I think we're good. Sally and Paul, are we-
Yes, we are through. I didn't know we were after the Lincoln Award, so I had that in the PowerPoint, but that's already done, so.
Okay, yep.
Thank you for the time tonight.
Thank you both.
Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. We'll now move into our next discussion item, C2, which is the new course proposals for 2021 and 2022. Dr. Gillespie, is this you?
Yep, she's on her way up.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. Dr. Kazmercek, we're excited tonight to talk about some new course proposals that we have for 2021, 22. I'm going to introduce a friend, Jen Baelish, the Director of Curriculum Instruction, who we've met this year. Each year, we bring course proposals to the board that either have course name enhancements, and tonight, we're extra excited because we have a course that's been in the works for quite some time, and that started through student voice and leadership, and so Jen will introduce guests that she has with her tonight, but I think you'll enjoy the presentation, and we're really proud of the work that they've done, so.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Gillespie. Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Kazmercek, thanks for having me tonight. I am going to go through our new course proposals, and really, I do want to devote the majority of our time to our one new course proposal. We do have some name changes and a format proposal, so I will, I will go through those, and then we will spend the majority of time hearing from students and teachers on our presentation for a new course. So, sorry about that. Great. So as you know, our work is grounded in the World's Best Workforce School, all students, college and career-ready by graduation, and we bring new course proposals to our World's Best Workforce Committee to get feedback, and then to the board. We look to see that our proposals are aligned with the standards, we take into consideration perspectives from future employers, post-secondary institutions, former and current students. We also look to our strategic plan for guidance. We also consider school capacity to implement our new courses, including implications for staffing, scheduling, and for facilities. As I mentioned, I have a few course name changes for you tonight, a course format, and then a new course. The first course that I want to share with you is Honors Biology. The Science Department would like to bring the rigorous content, best teaching practices, and enrichment opportunities to all students, not to just the students who self-select to enroll in Honors Biology, and so Honors Biology would be Biology. And students would still have the opportunity to take the AP Biology course for a more advanced option in 10th grade, and this course fulfills the 10th-grade science credit towards graduation. The second course is from the Family and Consumer Science Department, they would like to change the name, International Foods, to Food and Society, and the rationale for change is to shift the focus from exploring foods from different countries to focusing on the content of geographic, cultural, traditional, and agricultural influences that dictate food choices across the country and around the world. The purpose of the course change is for students to feel connected to their own culture and to different cultures through similarities in why they make the food choices they do. And then finally, another course from the Family and Consumer Science Department, they would like to change the name from Parenting and Child Development to just Child Development. This course would prepare students for occupations and higher education programs related to the spectrum of child-centered careers, thus the name change, and this course is also one of our Education Career Pathway courses. And then finally, course format change for AP Psychology. The Social Studies Department would like to offer this course in a hybrid format, in addition to the in-person format that already exists. They believe it will create more in-class time for discussions and application of concepts with teachers with support in the classroom. So usually, when we offer a course, we offer it in the morning, right away, first hour or sixth hour, so that that course doesn't meet every day, and so students have some flexibility within their schedule, still working on the content, but have a little bit more self-direction with this hybrid course offering. And then one thing I just want to remind us is, we have new standards with Minnesota Science, and so for next year, we will start that course sequence change in sixth grade. So just a reminder, next year, we will have Earth Science in sixth grade for our students, and then by 2023, 2024, they'll have that sequence of Earth Science, Life Science, and then Physical Science, that year that the MCA4 tests will begin. So before I introduce my guests, I just wanted to pause to see if there's any questions about the format change or name changes.
Questions, comments, concerns? Please help me observe.
I have one, sorry.
Ms. Thompson?
And this is maybe silly, I'm not sure, but my daughter's currently in sixth grade, so she'll still do the current format, and this will just take effect for new sixth graders starting next year.
Exactly.
That's what I figured, but-
Yep.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Okay, thank you very much. Please continue.
Thank you. So tonight, I have a group of students, and I have some teachers. We are proposing a new course, Ethnic Studies: History of the United States, and this is a full-year course that would be offered to 10th-grade students. It would fulfill the 10th-grade social studies standards for graduation, and it will be offered to all students. And we have spent many years in preparation for this course with professional development for our teachers and for our students, and so the unique thing about an Ethnic Studies: History of the United States course is, it really is a co-creation of students and teachers creating the curriculum for the course, and so we thought it was most appropriate to be able to have, have you hear from those students and teachers. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Brianna Santos-Coy, and she has some students with us tonight, and their families, I think, are here. And she's going to talk just a little bit about the evolution of how this course came to be, and then we'll hear from the students. And I can-
Oh, thank you. Good evening. Hi, friends. Buenas noches. I'm Brianna Santos-Coy, I'm the District-wide Cultural Distan with Latino Students and Families, and now the Family/Student Community Engagement Coordinator, something like that. It's new, so haven't memorized my long title yet. So as Jen said, thank you for having us here tonight. As Jen said, it's been, I don't know, three years since I got here, that we've been working on this, talking about this, meeting with teachers, other stakeholders, students, and so I'm really, really excited to be here tonight, to actually be proposing the first course, Ethnic Studies: History of the United States. And we have two students here, and I know there are some teachers here as well. We've been talking about this for a long time in group, Latinos Unidos, they're both in Latinos Unidos. Javier started at Sunrise, and now he's at North, and Haley started when she was in ninth grade, and she's a senior this year itself, so they're just going to share a little bit of their perspective, and then we'll hear from some of the teachers that participated in this summer's Ethnic Studies Pedagogy Trainings. Go ahead.
My name's Haley, and I've been, like Brianna said, I've been attending Latinos Unidos since I was in my freshman year, and I was a little nervous at first to go to the meetings and stuff like that, until one of my friends finally brought me, and I decided to go. But when I went, I was welcomed by Brianna, who made me really comfortable, like, being who I am and creating a safe space for me and everybody else in Latinos Unidos. The first time that we talked about the Ethnic Studies group was my first time hearing about the course as it was offered, but usually was not produced because of students not knowing about it. And as we talked about it more and more, and talked about separate history, our own history, it made me very intrigued with the idea of the course. And I believe that the Ethnic Studies course is needed in White Bear Lake schools and many other schools for a number of reasons. First, students, and myself included, tend to pay attention to curriculum that they find interesting, that they can relate to, and that they have prior knowledge to. This class has a positive impact on academic engagement, which could lead to higher graduation rates, higher test scores, and so much more. And the class, like, it leads to all students having the opportunity to learn about so many different cultures, and not just learning the one side of United States history, which I believe will create open-minded students in our schools and schools everywhere else. And I'm super excited, because like Brianna said, we've been working on it for, since I was a freshman, so four years now about, and I remember when we were signing petitions and getting teacher signatures, getting any signatures that we could to try and make this actually happen, so it's amazing to me, standing in front of you all, and thank you guys for having me here, definitely, too, because I'm super excited about this. And I believe that, you know, when we, when you guys offer it, like, for freshmen, if they're able to continue that course, or, you know, take the course just once, whatever, that, I believe that it'll give them more of a, more of a reason to continue with their education, because there are courses that are offered like this in post-secondary schools, and I feel like that's another great reason to have this course offered here in White Bear Lake.
Thank you.
My name is Javier.
My name is Javier, and I'm a freshman at North. And I first heard about Ethnic Studies when I was a 7th grader, I think. We went to Latinos Unidos, me and all the Latinos at Sunrise. You know, such a fun course. I love it. Brianna did a really good job teaching it. Yeah. Sorry. I think the course would be really important to not just Latinos, but like everyone. I think everyone can like improve as a person. And like, like she said, more, be more open-minded to everything. And not just hear, like you said, the one side. And if I had the option to take this course, I would, 100%. Because I just want to learn so much more about other people, not just me, not just, you know, about the US. And I know a bunch of other kids that would love to take this course too, not just me and, you know. Yeah, so many kids, I would.
Thank you so much. Nope, you're you're welcome. I mean, if you want to stay up here, you can. It's up to you. All right, now at this time, I'd like to introduce our teachers that have been working on the Pedagogy PD. Hannah Hensley, and we have Mr. Mark Domshot. You did. Great. So I I just asked them, how has this really impacted who they are as an educator? And what are they looking forward to with this new course?
Hello, yes, and thank you so much for having us. It's truly an honor to be here and very exciting work to be a part of. So we participated in professional development this summer in five or six sessions, I believe, of several hours during the summer. But very exciting work. And we were able to work with Clever Ortiz, who's just a phenomenal instructor and was very great at modeling challenging questions of our own perspectives and different biases that we bring into our teaching, how we are addressing those, and the missing narratives from a lot of the US history curriculum, which was a very eye-opening and challenging in a good way. Personally, as an educator, I am so excited because the students, I mean, even myself, learning, it's it's such important work. And as an educator, this could be the most important work that I will do in my career. And to have students who see themselves reflected in the curriculum and bought into what we are doing in class, that leads to them taking ownership and changing the world, taking those action steps. And that is such a critical part of the Ethnic Studies curriculum as well. Not just learning different narratives that they haven't heard before, because that is important. But being empowered to take those action steps, just like Haley and Javier are already doing, which is thrilling to see that even the thought of this course is leading to such student action and them taking ownership. So it's a very exciting thing to be a part of as an educator and truly just stepping into, walking alongside these kids in their journey and creating this knowledge together.
Good evening. Yes, good to be with all of you. I won't take a lot of your time. Hannah did a great job, and Haley and Javier obviously expressed themselves. And I think I said this at the last meeting that I was at with some of these individuals, that I couldn't be more proud, honestly, to be a bear through this process. It was the ride of this course in terms of with Brianna and Clever and the teachers that we've been working with. It was probably the most challenging, humbling experience of my 27 years of teaching. It challenged me constantly. It kept me engaged. It made me think about myself, my life, my decisions. I think it's made me a great teacher the past year and a half, just being through this process. The last thing I just want to say is the thing that both these individuals said, they're active participants, and that's what our students need. All students need to be active participants, and they have to look at history and that everyone were active participants in American history. There weren't victims. You know, they weren't, they have to look at it through all perspectives and to show that they were were active participants. And today, that these students can be active participants too, with that confidence and that wherewithal. And so I'm just really proud to be part of this. It's going to be hard, but I think the teachers are really looking forward to it. We've had great leadership with Brianna and Jen and Clever. So we're excited to go forward with this. And like I said, I couldn't be more proud of this district right now with this move we're making. Thanks.
Great. At this time, I'll open it up for any questions.
Questions? Ms. Ellison?
No, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chapman.
I'm a little weepy about this. I'm not sure if you, if you know, I'm a history educator, teacher educator, do a lot of work with culturally relevant pedagogy. And the things that I heard said makes me also so proud. I want to call out a couple of the things I heard Haley and Javier say. I think when Haley was talking about petitions, that really brought to mind for me that what we're doing here is not just world's best workforce for career and college ready, but also for civic life. And this really, from what I heard from the two of you, this shows me that you are using your voice and you're excited to use it. And then what I heard Javier say is that this course, he hopes it will help people improve as a person. And I think we need to listen to our students and what they're saying here. This is good history. What what I'm reading here, this is good pedagogy. This is this is exactly where the history field is going. We're in too late, I think, but this is this is the right direction. And I'm so excited. I'm so excited that this is happening. I'm sorry. I guess the only question that I have is, will this course then, for our 10th graders, be in place of what is currently there? Or will it be an elective? So will students opt in? Or will this be their choice?
Yep. So this will not be an elective. This will be their 10th grade option course that they can take for 10th grade to fulfill their graduation requirement.
Excellent. And then my other question is, as our students change, then the course might change. Is is that the intention, that the students will be co-constructing knowledge as part of the course? And the teachers will listen to who's in the classroom and focus on on that? Is that the intention?
Yes, that is the intention, yep. That the students are really driving the curriculum. And so that co-creation and that continuous improvement and the needs of the students will will be there.
Wonderful. Well, I just want to say thank you to Brianna and Haley and Javier for coming here tonight and presenting. This is, this shows, I think, that history is really useful. I think a lot of times we we look at history and we don't think it's useful. But you are showing how it is important and we need to be paying attention. So bravo.
Thank you, Ms. Ellison. Mr. Chapman?
Ms. Ellison basically said a lot of what I was going to say, but I I will say my eyes were watering a little bit as well. I think this is a course that is, not only here in White Bear, but throughout the country, is grossly overdue. I mean, that's that's a virtual understatement, I think, in in saying. And I'm glad to hear that the course is is going to be one that that is not going to be an elective. I was going to ask that question as well, and to hear that it's not is is wonderful. I think I think Hannah or Javier, one of them, had mentioned that to make the, you know, all kids to to take a course like this, to make them more sensitive and and grow as a person is is exactly what we need in this country and here in White Bear as well. So thank you so very, very much for all the work that, and the two of you, Hannah and Javier, for being here tonight. It's it's wonderful to hear that we're moving in this direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chapman. Dr. Newmaster?
Again, I'm going to repeat what has been said. But I can tell you, it's long-awaited, and Haley and Javier, I'm so proud that you had the stick-to-itiveness and the vision to know what was missing, the voices that were missing. And I'm a mom of a daughter of color who went through this school district, who missed those voices. So you are making it richer and better for everybody. And we need all those perspectives and voices if we're going to survive. So thank you for your patience and hard work. And I'm really proud of you and all the adults that are helping facilitate your vision. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Newmaster. Other questions, comments?
I just want to say congratulations to Brianna and everyone. Because I remember, you know, being a freshman and signing those petitions for you all. And yeah, I just want to say congratulations, you know, it's a really big step. Because I remember, you know, just hearing about it. But I just have one question is, being like a student full of, you know, majority-white peers and being like a product of historical trauma, is how are we going to accommodate students who are products of it when those, you know, very raw subjects are brought to light? So, yeah.
Thank you for that that question. I think part of Ethnic Studies is about that pedagogy and how we really are creating instructional strategies that hear all voices and be able to to really feel that that students have a voice and a place in in the curriculum. And so that's why this course is so different. It's not just about multiple perspectives, but it's a it's a whole new way of teaching. So students feel part of that, that course, and feel part of the learning is really designed around them. Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Is there anybody else has a question or a comment?
Well, I just wanted to make a quick comment about what you just said. A central part, the one of the most important parts of Ethnic Studies is that has to create healing space for students. That's the central piece of like Ethnic Studies Pedagogy. Whichever teachers are teaching the course, they have to know how to do that and have to work on doing that every day in collaboration with students and families too. So that healing piece, that's critical.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Ms. Thompson?
I would echo everything Jessica said. I am overwhelmed with emotion and pride. And as somebody who grew up, I am multi-ethnical. I have a lot of different cultures in my life. And I, this is all stuff I wish would have been in school when I was in school. And it took me going to college to learn these kind of courses. And to answer to your question, professors know how to do this and they know how to teach these classes and keep everybody in the room protected and feeling that they can share their their views or their thoughts without hurting anybody. And I believe that we can definitely do that in our district. And a lot of tears were forming in my eyes, and I was trying not to. And I just want to thank Haley and Javier for being here tonight. And I am truly in awe and I am thankful.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? So Dr. Kazrichak or Ms. Bavish? Next steps are that this will come in front of the board at the next meeting. I'm I'm assuming for the board to approve the the course changes and the course proposals and then the new course.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
So we will now move on to our last discussion item, C3, which is the Learning Model Planning Update. Dr. Kazrichak?
Thank you, Chairman Mullin, members of the board. So I wanted to talk a little bit tonight about where we're where we currently are as a school district with, as we look at our data. But before I do that, I just, I want to extend a thank you to so many different people. I'm not going to, I'm not going to list necessarily groups of people at this point. But we've gotten off to a really good start this school year. I know several board members, you have acknowledged that at previous board meetings and offered your thanks. And I I wish to do the same. I want to thank our teachers for the the heavy lift to get the year off to a great start. And as we're moving through these last few weeks, the case rate data that we we are paying attention to are heading in the wrong direction. As I indicated a few weeks ago, I had hoped at this point that, perhaps naively, that we might be talking about increasing the amount of time students are in-person, especially at the elementary level. But in the last few weeks, the case rate data has shifted to to be heading in the wrong direction. So so this evening, I just want to lay out what we're thinking at this point and how we how we plan to move forward. I'm not, we're not asking the board to act on anything tonight, but I but I am, you know, I think we're seeking consensus that we can move ahead and begin the planning and make sure parents are aware of what's what's coming. So it seems like anyone paying attention to education right now in Minnesota is aware of 14-day case rate by county data. Not a not a common term before this all happened. But as we, as you can see on the dashboard, those those figures are current as of last Thursday when the Department of Health releases their data. Excuse me. So for us, as a school district, if we combine those, using a blended rates, we're we're in the upper 20s. And we anticipate that we'll be we'll be heading heading over 30. And that's a key indicator because once you get 30 and above, that's a recommended learning model of for secondary as as distance learning. So as we, go ahead, Marissa. So what what I'm recommending tonight is that we shift our secondary learning model beginning on November 9th. That we'd be in a distance learning model for middle school and high school students. And the timeline to get there is that we would, we would finish out this week. And then next week, we have November 2nd and 3rd. So Monday and Tuesday were not scheduled as student contact days. They were non-school days for all. And that we would use then November 4th through the 6th. So Wednesday, Thursday, Friday is our transition days. So students would not be in school on those days as we prepare for November 9th. And that would be a K-12, students K-12 would not be in school during those days. Childcare will be available for elementary and middle school. And then staff will be working and building the the transition plan at that time. So I won't, I won't read through all this, but as I mentioned, childcare options. So Monday and Tuesday, there were childcare options previously put in place. And so parents have signed up for that if they if they needed that. But then the new, the new addition would be the Wednesday through Friday. If parents need that service, we'd be able to, we'd be able to provide that. Just a comment on activities. This is a, this is an area that, quite honestly, it has been, there's been different answers. And so I went right to the source and communicated directly with State High School League Executive Director. And in no uncertain terms, if, as a district, our case rate data requires us to move into distance learning at the secondary level, that in-person student activities are to to discontinue at that point as well. And so, and so that would be the plan. We would, we would continue with in-person activities through Sunday, November 8th. And that's important as you can, you know, as an example, you can see the set on stage here. We have a musical that would be performed through that weekend. And then there are some other activities as well that would be conducted through through that date. And then on November 9th, we would shift to our distance learning model at the secondary level. And there would be no longer in-person participation in in activities for practices or competition. So. Again, the dashboard, we update that weekly. Again, the dashboard, we update that weekly. And we anticipate that this week's data will push us up into that, as a blended rate for our different counties, up into that figure above 30. So we would, we're beginning the planning. We've begun the planning, and so we're sharing that with you tonight. Not great news, but this is where we're at, and we're not in isolation. This is not a White Bear Lake thing, and we're out on an island doing this. This is happening across the metro and really the state as our, as case rate numbers are not looking good metrowide or even in rural Minnesota. So. So with that, we would take some questions. We have a lot to work through. We have a lot of details to work through. It's, again, it's, it'll take a lot of effort to get to November 9th, but we're confident that we can take what we've learned these first few weeks. We can take what we learned last year during the spring. We can take feedback that we've gotten from all sorts of different stakeholders and that we can actually move forward on November 9th and make some improvements, K-12, and so that going forward, we'll be able to offer an even better product. So. So there's a few of us here to answer some questions. Just know that we have a lot of work to do, but that's the basic framework of where we're headed. So.
Thank you, Dr. Kedrick. Dr. Arcan.
And I think that one of the things I always, I think it's lost in this is, yes, we're trying to keep our teachers and our students safe during this, but I think people sometimes don't understand that if we get in a pandemic, it's hard to staff our schools when you can't get bus drivers and you can't get pares and you can't get people that work in the cafeteria, and you can't get substitute teachers. And so that's one of the things I don't think people realize is that when we get hit hard, we just can't get enough adults in the building for the students. So this is a safe alternative to head down that road.
And one of the, yeah, and one of the challenges is when we're, not necessarily positive cases, but when we're quarantining and when we have close contacts of staff and of students. I mean, the frequency of those occurrences are, it's increasing. So, thank you.
Ms. Ellison?
I have two questions. One is concerning meals for secondary. How will that be handled?
I will take a crack at it. Mr. Wald had to leave for a city council meeting related to facilities, but meals will still be made available, and the distribution of those we will need to work through. But meals will still be made available, absolutely.
Okay. And then the other question I had, and you might not know the details of this yet, but when you talk about changes to operations in elementary, do you have an example?
Sure, I can comment on that. So we're going through right now, and Dr. Gillespie might want to add if I don't cover it as well as you might want me to, Dr. Gillespie. But our goal is to take a look at what we've been doing at the elementary level, and are there ways that, so can we pause for a moment here and for a few days? And can we make that learning model better at the elementary level, make the hybrid model even better? And we think we can. And so our goal is going to be to, any student who is in distance learning, that we would have a teacher who is assigned to the, to distance learning students. And then students who are in hybrid would be assigned to a teacher who is teaching hybrid. So those, right now, we have a, we have more of a blended model, and we're going to do what we can to limit that. And Dr. Gillespie, if you want to add anything? I think, well, one of, oh, one other thing, one key part, and I, this is going to create a, you know, a ripple through our community, because it's going to be a change. But we do intend to pull the Tier 1 students out of the elementary schools and utilize North and South Campus. These are tentative plans. This could, the sites could potentially change. But our thinking right now is that North and South Campus would become our childcare centers for Tier 1 students. We need that service. And so between now and November 9th, we have a lot of work to do, but those are the things that we're thinking at the elementary level to make that model work even better.
Yeah. So the goal is to have all of our educators be able to focus on one model. They've been working extremely hard and we're grateful, but how do we make it more sustainable for them and our students? And so we're empathetic, knowing that a shift is really difficult for families and students, but we believe this will be able to provide a higher quality education based on our model that we put together. And so we're working, I'm working on it with the principals, literally up until the very second I came here today, to make sure that we can make it work in the least disruptive way possible, but able to do that with our numbers. So it's changing by the moment, and we'll communicate as soon as we can details.
Yeah, and we hope that, you know, at some point in the future, we, the conversation we were hoping to have a few weeks ago about bringing elementary students in for more in-person, we hope we can have that later in the school year. But that's on hold. And so now we're going to focus on, as Dr. Gillespie described, you know, one learning model and making it even better. So, you know, we have a lot of school year left, right? It's, we're still in October. So there's a lot of great opportunity here, and I think this is a good time. Again, the, you know, the reason we're pausing is because the case rate data aren't looking so good, so I don't want to be thankful for that. But I think anytime there's an opportunity to sit back and reflect for a moment and learn from what we've been doing, I think it's important to take that opportunity and view what's not necessarily a great thing going on, but view the opportunity that exists within that. So.
And each one of our buildings did a survey to their families, so we have that feedback. And we've also worked really closely and in partnership at both the building level and the district level with our teachers' union to make sure we have back-and-forth feedback of where we can get better. And so I really believe we're going to get better. Change is really hard, and this has been a really difficult year. So we have to go through some hiccups along the way right now, and we'll continue to come together and navigate. We've learned a lot on how to do that, and I'm confident that we will come out. I've been confident this whole time, but I feel a lot more confident that this is going to be really good for our community and are more sustainable in a really difficult time. But, yeah.
I want to make a comment on the Minnesota Department of Health and the Minnesota Department of Education have provided guidance. And I think that word, I think that word is maybe misunderstood. I don't, I don't think it means, here's some general guidance you may or may not like to use. This is the guidance that I believe in our positions, that we are obligated to follow. And that is our approach. And I know that, you know, we hear from, we hear from parents and staff members and, you know, we hear from all sorts of people who are on either side of the argument of open schools up and get the kids back in there full-time versus you need to shut down now. And so striking that balance, the standard response is we need to rely on our public health experts for how we're going to make decisions, and we're going to stick to that. And so I just wanted to make that comment here, because a recommendation seems like you could kind of take it or leave it, but that is not, that is not how we interpret that from the Department of Health at all. And unless they come out with some shocking memo that says you have that flexibility, we don't have that flexibility. And so I think this plan is responsible, and I think it will ultimately, it's ultimately what we need to do, and ultimately will make for a better delivery of education in White Bear Lake.
Thank you. I'm really grateful for all the multi-layers of work, and I'm glad that you addressed the distance learning, because that was going to be my question, is how are we going to move forward with our distance learning? So I think that's fantastic. And before Dr. Arcan takes the floor, I wanted to ask a follow-up. And of course, we can't know, because everything changes every day. But what's the forward-looking plan? I mean, are we looking two weeks out at a time? Are we looking for a little bit more stability and looking for quarter two? So what's the thought?
Yep, that's a great question. And the thinking right now is that we would shift and we would remain in this model through this quarter and reevaluate, so that if there were going to be a change, if a change was allowable in January, that we would consider it at that point. But it's difficult to change an entire system the size of White Bear Lake area schools. And so we need to be cautious about creating whiplash in our community, too. And so we're going to make the changes that we're suggesting here, and then we'll settle into that for several weeks. And then if the data suggests we might consider a different option, then we would do that. The public health experts are not creating a lot of optimism right now with what is coming. As cases are surging, they're anticipating, you know, anywhere from four to six weeks of continued increases. And so, I mean, I don't have a crystal ball as to what they will be at that point, but long answer to your question, we're, at this point, we're thinking that we would get through this next, through the quarter. So at semester time, we'd be reevaluating. Well, we'd be reevaluating in mid to late December and into January to see where we're going to go in mid to late January. And again, our hope is that perhaps at that point, we might make some modifications to the plan. Again, I have a real strong desire, if we can pull it off safely, to get our littlest learners back in for more, if we can do that. But yeah, I know Dr. Gillespie has some thoughts as well on what might come, but.
Yeah, how do we support students who are, you know, credit deficient, our seniors, students who need additional supports and aren't being successful in the model, really working with, in partnership with our buildings and educators and making sure we're closing gaps that we know exist within our system? And so what we look like when we come back in hybrid will look different than we are right now, and how we continue to make sure we're safe, able to maintain a model that has our educators being able to focus on that one model and providing those supports will be my parameters that I work with, with our educators. And so what that looks like, I'm confident and know that we can come up with some ideas. And those are just, you know, some that I've talked to a few people about. And so we'll know more as we navigate distance learning for a while on what's working and what isn't. We have people right now who've been navigating distance learning and have seen some really great things happening, and then already know some areas that we could look at and start partnering together. So.
Dr. Arcan, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just have one question. As we move to this distance learning then, and looking at the governor's emergency plan, are we going to then have our secondary teachers work from home? Because the plan says those that can work from home should work from home. Is that the plan?
Well, I think that's, you know, I think, yes, I think that certainly. I think some will choose to work in schools and some will choose to work at home. Yep. Some, I think, yeah, just depending on what's, quite honestly, what may be going on at their home might be a whole lot, you know, a whole lot of activity with kids, and so they might find it more productive to be in school. But, yeah, we'd be flexible with that.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson?
I just wanted to say, first, when I heard that we were considering this and I saw a little bit of the details, I was thankful for the thoughtfulness that went into the planning. And I like the ideas of all the things we're doing, because I've been doing a lot of reading lately about the overwhelming stress that our educators are under. And hearing things that every three out of 10 teachers is looking to leave their job is really disheartening. So anything we can do to support them is wonderful. So I was a little overwhelmed with emotion when I heard some of the things that we were considering doing with this switch, and I'm thankful. One of my questions would be currently, like, my daughter goes to middle school. She does the hybrid program, so she is in her class the two days a week, and then the other two days are like her at-home learning days. And she doesn't really check in with any teachers unless there's a specific need. Would we still kind of follow that format, or would we switch to where they're getting instruction every day?
We're switching to when they get instruction every day.
Okay.
Our secondary principal shared schedule with their educators, and we're working through some of the communication glitches and what that looks like. But yep, they would log into their classes every day and then making sure we meet where teachers have figured out workshop models and different structures that work in their lessons. But yeah, they would have Monday through Thursday direct instruction with their teachers.
And I think that will be helpful to, for parents in the district to be more apt to accept this change, as it's something that is out of all of our control, but it are things that we have to do, and we're learning as we go. But I think that that idea, parents will hopefully be a little more receptive to this, you know, thing that everybody is learning as we go. And I think that's, really, that's all I had for a question and thoughts. Thank you.
Can I clarify something real quick? Because I think it's important, especially people who don't do the research that we do around distance learning. It's not a six-hour day that kids log in and are plugged into the computer that doesn't support adolescent learning. And so it would be around three hours that there would be, you know, it would be daily check-ins and synchronous access to their teachers. But we'll make sure to clearly communicate, but that isn't a six-hour day where they're logged into class and receiving school like they would. And sometimes that can be confusing for families. So just make sure that that's clearly communicated.
Yeah, that is too much time on a screen. I spent eight hours on my screen on Saturday. I had training and then I had school. And when I was done, I felt awful. It just, it isn't a good thing.
You've probably just recovered from it, huh? You've probably just recovered from that day. Yeah. I wanted to add, I want to add one thing, and I, you know, I, this is under the category of tentative. But, so I had given the school board a heads-up on this idea that we're, and it's been something we've discussed for a couple of years now in school start times. And so the discussion around secondary is that, well, if we're not, you know, if you don't need to start 9th and 10th graders at 7:30 in the morning, why would we? And so adolescent sleep research is pretty strong, and so we're looking at aligning some of our decisions with some of the research that we know exists and that we know we need to move as a system. And so perhaps taking an opportunity here to implement some of that as we get into that broader discussion on a more permanent basis going forward, especially as we consider the new school buildings and making those types of adjustments. So this provides us an opportunity to perhaps follow that sound research.
Mr. Chapman?
Couple of items. First off, I just want to thank you, Dr. Kay, and you, Dr. Arcan, for just bringing up the idea, the ideas that you had mentioned. First off, with you, Dr. Kay, about, you know, the nomenclature being used by the state, because as all of us on the board and administration have seen, I think there is a lot of misunderstanding and confusion out there about what that really means, that it's not necessarily, you know, get-to-choice-type situation. And Dr. Arcan, I thought your comment about basically that we, you know, you can't run a school if you don't have the appropriate staff in-person setting. And we've got more and more people, as you have mentioned, Dr. Kay, too, that are out being quarantined and so forth. So I think that is great. The other, the question I guess I have is with regard to mental health services. Have we heard anything more from, given the fact that more and more we're going to be looking, districts, not just White Bear, but around the state are going to be looking more and more at the distance learning model? Any more word as far as resources, additional resources and so forth to address the mental health needs that might be out there with students? And for that matter, I guess, staff, too. Just curious if we've heard anything or if that area hasn't, has kind of taken a backseat to the physical safety needs?
Thanks for that question, Kim. No, I think that is taking a front seat in our work. We're partnering very closely with our county partners on some different grants and some different types of resources that we can be providing to our families. And so we think that this is a big priority in our work, and so we are continuing to push that forward.
Okay. But we haven't gotten any specifics really from like the state or anything, any further guidance or resources that.
Yeah, so in the CARES Act, we've been allocating some funds to empower you and some other different resources and professional development on self-care. And then with regard to the county, we're working through accessing resources to increase our co-located partnerships. And then at the Bear Care Clinic that we have, we have a new social worker there that's going to be providing free services. So just trying to increase those services to our families and increase the access to those.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Of course.
Other questions, comments, concerns? All right. Thank you, Dr. Kazrichak. Did I miss anybody? Because I can't see everybody.
Yeah, I think, I think we're good. So we're, we're going to proceed. I, I, you know, I'm not, we're not taking a vote, but I, I believe there's a support for moving ahead with what's been discussed tonight and so we're going to move ahead with that. So thank you all for the good conversation.
All right. Thank you very much. I just want to say before we go or before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I just want to thank everybody for their patience in dealing with, uh, me remotely. I appreciate, uh, I appreciate you dealing with the headaches. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Chair Mullen, I motion to adjourn?
And there's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Thompson. Uh, this will require a roll call vote, so I would ask the clerk to please read the roll.
Thompson?
Aye.
Arcan?
Aye.
Chapman?
Aye.
Ellison, aye. Mullen?
Aye.
Newmaster?
Aye.
And with that, we are adjourned.